Whenever you guys are ready.
So, first of all, I'm welcome everyone. And I will explain how we do this tonight. We are doing it in person with COVID restrictions. So if you're seated, you can take your masks off. But if you stand, even if it's to be, to ask the question, you need to put your mask on. You need to move to the room and you might put your mask on. If you get up to move, just put your mask on. That's number one. And I tried to do the room so that everybody can have a little bit of space. And feel free to move around, move the chairs around to fit your grouping. Secondly, we are also zooming this meeting, live streaming it. So the connection here is specky. So we're hoping that the audio works for our virtual audience. But we're not positive. So if you speak, could you please speak loudly? Some of us, Mr. Nap over here doesn't have a problem with that. But other people might speak softly. So if you're going to speak, please raise your voice so that we can capture it for those who are tuning in virtually. Meeting is being recorded and it will be archived. So you'll be able to go to the website and listen to it. Or tell anybody else that wants to talk that could be there. This is a special meeting of the Compton Town Board. It's here in Compton, the Fire Department, and I want to say thank you to them for giving us.
Fire exits are out. Kids to your left, to your right, behind you, or go up to the area you came in. Restrooms are down the right if you need to use them.
Thank you. That's a fire fight back there. So anyway, I just want to thank Fire Department for letting us use the hall. We didn't know if it would turn out to be, if we did it in person or if we did it virtually. But it seemed like an appropriate thing to do since Farm Days is just being done. So it's good to do something that we can do. So, just so we all understand what we're here for and what we're not here for. This purpose of this meeting is for the board. And I'll introduce them in a minute. And the town, the community, to learn about Empire Farm Days. We are here, the board, to learn just as much as you are and to get information and to be able to ask questions. This event is happening in Compton County. But it is not the town's role or responsibility for permitting that's required. It is considered a mass event in New York State. Some New York State permitting laws kick in. And so do does the county partner help us. But they will be the ones to describe what's going on. So just so you're clear, the board's not taking any action tonight. We're going to learn, just like you are. And so there's not committing vote or anything purely informational for the sake of the public. So that the community could come out and have an opportunity to hear what's going to happen and to ask questions. So with that said, this is the Town Board. Start at the end with Carl Dennis. She went here forever. Joe Larkin. Yan Grisius. Renee Rundell. And then this panel is invited to come and provide information. They don't have to do this, so I just want to emphasize that. This is courtesy to us. Jane Caladino is here representing Caladino Farms. Our county legislator, David Knapp, is here on behalf of the county. And Ken Marion is here on behalf of Lee Publications, who is the sponsor of the Farm Days. It's going to be on Dan's farm. Lee Publications is the sponsor. So just a couple logistics. The process we're going to employ. This is not going to be a marathon session. I'm going to tell you that right now. I'm hoping to keep it to no more than an hour and a half or two hours at most. So I will not let it go long. It just wears people out and you get the comfort of the back of the period of time. First, the panels will speak. We'll refer to them. Then the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. And then the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. And public input is really welcome. We want to hear from you, ask your questions, make your comments. If you're here in person and you want to be heard, when you get to that point, please raise your hand. We'll try and take you in some semblance of order. We're also probably going to allow people that are zooming in to act, to put comments or questions in the chat box. And so Ron Pochotelli is our webmaster for the town. She does an amazing job. I know you don't understand how this is going to do, but it has been an experience for me for the last year plus. But she will control the flow of the public question. So she might switch from live to virtual just to let people on that are tuning in also be heard. So, the first thing people should do if they're going to speak is identify themselves and address, so we know where you're from. Also, the questions should be only about Farm Days because that's what we're here for. So please limit your questions or your comments to Empire Farm Days. And I don't want to limit people's time to speak. But I am not going to let somebody go on and on and on and utilize more time than is appropriate. So if you can keep your comments to three minutes or so, if you need to go a little bit longer, we'll be accommodating. But I just, I want people to be heard. There's a sufficient number of you here that, and if anybody, if people speak, it's going to take them a while. And I'd ask you, if you, if you want to say the same thing that somebody else said, if we can keep the repetitiveness down, fine, if you want to stand up and say, I agree with whatever, but if we, can we just not repeat the same questions? Or comments? And just trying to make sure that this is a productive informational session. And most importantly, can we please be civil? Can we please respect each other's positions? You might not agree with them, but if we can just allow people to be heard, that's what this is here, we're here for. If they have questions that you don't agree with, that's fine. You can ask them, you can ask your own questions, but please wait till we call them. Please keep your tone and voice civil. Please don't interrupt whoever does have the floor. That is respectful to the person who has been recognized. And if we do reach the allotted time of an hour and a half or so, and we're not sure that we've heard from everybody that wants to be heard from, we will decide as far as what we want to do next. But so whether we continue or whether we do this again, or whether we have another way for questions to be asked. So we'll address that close to the end of this. Board members, is there anything you want to add to sort of the parameters that I've established? Are you good?
Okay.
So with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to our county legislator, David.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for the invitation. You know, this is the Empire Farm Days. It's something that goes way back in my personal history. I grew up on a dairy farm just down 23 and a half miles from here. I love it. Can you, this is my kind of meeting. And so, you know, it's like I said, a dairy farm that had been our family for many, many, many generations. And, you know, one of my favorite memories with growing up was getting together with my, my older brother, my father, my grandfather, and some uncles and heading out to the farm show. Back in those days, it moved around quite a bit. But, but, you know, we tried to get there just about every year to take a look at most of the stuff we knew we couldn't afford. But it was still fun to, fun to look at. So, you know, when, when I heard that this was a possibility of coming back to, to our county, you know, I talked to the county executive about it. He also saw it as a nice opportunity for, to support our local agricultural industry. Obviously, something of this magnitude brings a lot of attention to our community. You know, we have a really unique county. We have a large urban core. But around that, we've got some of the most fertile farmland in the country, really, certainly in upstate New York. And we are in the top 10 in pretty much every agricultural segment in New York State. And all this is again with a very large urban, urban core. So agriculture is very, very important to our community. And so, yeah, when the, when I told the county executive this was an opportunity, when it actually came to fruition, you know, maybe you may have seen, he came up and, and we did a nice press conference picking it up to kind of start to gain some, some excitement about it and hoping that from a COVID standpoint, you know, we'll be able to, to move this forward. So just a couple of things that, that Empire Farm Days, and I'm sure these gentlemen can talk much more about it. But, you know, it's not, it's not a field days. It's, it's not a festival. It's not a fair. Anything like that. It's, it's a trade show. And the, the nice thing about it, this trade show is the primary folks that you're showing your products to our family farms. And so this is a, this is a crowd that's pretty, pretty low key, pretty, you know, there's, there are people that grew up respecting the land and are going to respect, you know, the land up here. And so, you know, from, from that standpoint, you know, I don't, I don't see this as something that's going to, you know, cause a lot of, lot of problems in general for the community. And it is going to be a little positive for us going forward. My thoughts.
Ken, would you maybe talk about how it came to be at Caladino's? Is that possible?
I can do that. But first I want to just give a little background. And that is I produced trade shows for 35 years. We don't do circuses. We don't do things like that. It was unique to come to Caladino's. The show was dwindling. If that's the right term to use, in Santa Claus. We decided to come up here. There were some unique things that we had to work around. There can be no permitting structures. We're not going to have any field demonstrations because of it being, you know, organic farming like that. But the roadways aren't put in. Everything has to be underground. There's to be no poles sticking up or anything else. And basically, Dan's operation was an ideal spot to have it. It was returning where it was before. But I just want to say that we're not an organization that is a nonprofit that does one show a year. I produce several of these every year and we have a formula that works. We take the impact of the people around us into consideration. We have investigated traffic patterns. We have met with DOT. We've got different things. And the other thing about it is this is not a numbered show. I know what all the numbers say and so on, but relocating to a new facility or a new location, it's not a facility, a location. I want to make my terminology correct. Is, you know, these guys don't want to talk to 50,000 people. They want to talk to cows. They want to talk to acres. And they want to talk to people who buy equipment. So numbers wise, the first year, if I have five to 7,000 to 10,000 people per day, I'll be happy. More realistic, you're looking at probably more than 5,000. But I can't predict that because it's brand new.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I know there's people in this room that are hugely supportive and people that are very concerned. You know, Joe and I talked before this meeting started. And one goal is that everybody in this room next year is going to be proud of this show. What it's going to do to the community, what it's going to mean coming back here. 10 years ago, when I came back to take over the farm with Nick, you know, I watched Pompey dwindle down. I watched your restaurants that were here go away. You know, the Farm Days that we used to have, 87, last year we were here, I got pictures of it back. I'm going to show you guys. Lost Grandma, lost Grandpa, lost the Empire Farm Days. Dad stopped tracking pulling. It was like the whole world stopped. And I saw Pompey kind of took that same course too. When I came back, left corporate America to do this farm, I had no idea what I was going to do, but I knew I was going to get peace. I was going to try to build that back up and to build it back up in a way that I could, in a way that works now. Farm Equipment Teership doesn't work anymore. Brewery does. People want to come to them. It's there. It's using the products from the farm. It's using other farmers' products. We made a brewery that's family friendly, that people love. And I was pretty happy with that. And I think Nick was too. And then June 27th, I'm sitting in the house with my family, with my mom, with kids. And I get a text message and it says, would you be interested in talking about hosting the Empire Farm Days again? If you asked me a year ago, what's one dream that I could have ever had, not only for myself, but for the town, would be having that opportunity back again. Because I watched Betty Nicholas and the Lions Club auctioning the steer. And it was just this vibrancy and everybody was all about the community. So that next morning, I was talking to Bruce at eight o'clock in the morning. And Kenny comes next week and he says, what do you want? I said, I want it to be about the community like it was. I want to have the food and beverage so I can bring them all in and, and know that we can do this the right way. Involve the whole community, make it something that's, that's just awesome. And I know it's impactful, but it is a good show. Move me out of the past. It's right there. It's big. And there's a lot of traffic. And there won't be dust like there was because we're investing. These guys are investing to put these stone roadways in. But there was light holes, telephone holes at night. It lit up like a Christmas tree. We don't have that anymore. It's going to come in, it's going to go away. It's going to drive a huge amount of economic impact for the town. I got it there in the reports. 4H, $5,000 to 4H, just to go around with the advisors to pick up sanitation. $4,500 to the Lion, Pompey Lions Club, park the cars. $5,000 to FFA to, to park the cars. Lions Club's collecting the cash. And that's just from these guys. Then I've gone around to all the community organizations and said, give me your volunteers. We'll work all the food booths, all the stuff, all the other stuff that I've got to do. And I'll pay the volunteers and we'll do a profit shift. And this is in open. These guys have had no fundraisers. So, you know, I'm just, it's very, you can tell I'm passionate about this. And it's because of my passion about this and their execution that they've proven time and time again, why this show is going to come. It's going to be a success. And we're going to listen and do as much as we can to make it not as impactful. And I just hope you guys can, you're now, be thankful for it. Appreciate it.
You guys good? Do you want to explain the reasons?
Yeah, okay. So here, well, I've given you all a map of the show. In comparison, in comparison for you. Sorry, remain standing up quick.
It's fine. We can still see you.
This is the show in 1986 year, second to last year it was here. It was 1,600 feet by 1,600 feet as it was on the other side of Sweet Road. That was when we had a farm equipment dealership here, which is now Old Brooks. One of the other reasons the show can't be on that side of the road. We don't own those driveways anymore. The show now, Ken, you got that is smaller than it was in 86 because farms evolved, consolidated. You don't have, I mean, nobody really has a good estimate of how many people being put. We know it was less than one because I've gone to that show every single year since it's been held. Last year was the first year I didn't go because they canceled it. But back in 78, 79, and 80, you can see the shows in the same grounds. Here's the parking on Way's Field there and our field right here. On any overview picture I've seen of the show, we've got double the parking now, as you can see on your map. All those parking areas there comprise about 35 to 40 acres. Whereas the vast from our view here is about 20 acres that we had in the past. So we're confident that we have that. We have a contingency plan. If it does get, you know, really successful and everything, we can, we will be able to go across the street. But our goal is to keep everything on this side of, of Sweet Road. So that map is what it is. I know there may be some concern. Camper area, no hookups, nothing like that. Same thing they do at the Apple Festival. I talked to David about it. People do come to the farm show and they're campers. They stay. It's that camping area is up by me. It's my overflow parking lot. I'm giving it up for that. I have rules. If you go to our website and you click on Empire Farm Days and you go to camping, you can see all the rules and they are tight. Security, nothing past 10 o'clock. Everything's got to be quiet, lights out. So we've got control there. And then the black lines on the map are all fencing. So the whole show will be fenced off. There will only be one entrance to the show. One entrance to the show, and that's right here, the blue gate. Everybody has to, every participant has to register coming in and come through this way. Absolutely, nobody can go on the outskirts. It's all going to be fenced off. So I don't know. It's pretty good.
Would you let me share that photo I can pass it around?
Yeah.
Do you trust the people here?
Yeah.
I just think it's worth a look. If you haven't seen these, I think they benefit. I'm not showing them to you.
You can pass them there.
And I'll start this one over here. But I just think it's worth a look to see what it is up here. So, if you are good. I have questions. I don't know what to ask the board. I don't want to ask you here. Okay, go ahead. So my first question is about COVID. What? Because we've been, we've been going through with our twin program, the fact that we don't have a firm grasp of whether or not, what, what kind of twin program you can offer. So my question is, how is the Farm Days planning for whatever eventuality, or whatever situation within COVID times? I mean, I take it you're thinking, your planning is going to hold the event.
Well, we're going to hold the event. And we, wherever we hold an event, we have always gone by the COVID rules. No outdoor farm show has ever registered every person coming through the door. That is one of the rules that we have to abide by so that if somebody, you know, I know it was a Tuesday. I know everybody come in on Wednesday and Thursday. Now you're going to have people that are coming manning the booths. Now those people have to give me a certificate like they would if they worked for me, stating that they have not come in, they have not had fever, and so on. They have to do that every day. And the other thing is, as far as masks are concerned, they have to wear masks inside the tents. When they're walking around outside, you do not have to because you're easily in one of the 60 some odd acres or whatever, be able to distance yourself from the other. It'd be 76,000 people on 36 foot square. So if everybody had a six foot radius around them, you technically could put 76,000 people in one hut. But that's the point is that you're not going to have, you'll have to.
Okay. So, and by funneling everybody through one entrance that's intended to control, what they said, are you going to be tracked, you're keeping track of? I think, I'm just interested about COVID because it's a big question mark.
The reason we have to register everyone is because they're going, if COVID is where they are now, they're going to want records of people that were there. Say you went out Tuesday or you tested positive on Thursday. I will be able to give the record and say, these are the people that were there on Wednesday. That could have come in contact with this person. And the other thing is there are going to be masks available. I've got three times as many washer stations. I've got, I think I've cluttered the market in sanitizer, maybe not. But I think I've got that pretty much covered. And we all have rules we have to go by, right down to the porta potty guy. I mean, the porta potty guy has to give me more washing stations and more sanitizing stations than he normally would. He has to clean his batches. He has to be on site during the show. They normally didn't have to do that. So every hour or whatever, they're going to make a circle. They got 163 or 770 porta potties. They have to make sure. And same thing with the, with the washing station. We, we have been told, but like I said, everybody's told this and that or whatever. We have been told that things are going to loosen up in July and that almost going to have to stay fair now. But he's going to hold off until July 1st to do that. Now, the other thing I just want to interject, as I mentioned, with Empire Farm Days, but we put a farm show on in Pennsylvania in January. We're the only one that went on.
Inside?
Inside. And we jumped through every hoop known to man and we did it. We brought, we had five buildings. We limited the people to come in. But the other thing about it is at a truly farm show, I won't use the right term now, but you don't have grazers. By that, I mean the people that are coming to get the pens and the pencils and all that stuff. And with all the stuff these people had to do, the same thing with this one. You're going to get people that wanted to spend money. And while my crowd was reduced by better than a third, I had quality audience and they bought stuff. So if I could jump through those hoops, this is really not going to be a big deal. We will keep this safe for everyone. And, you know, as far as being masked police, I can't be everywhere. All right? But if they're in a tent and they don't have a mask on, we have people in the tents, they're going to make them put a mask on. If they don't put a mask on, they have to leave. And the tents is where we've been told. And I also, normally you have 30 foot wide tents. You know, you have 10, grow 10 by 10s here, 10 by 10s here, and a 10 foot aisle. I'm going to the 40 foot tents. So the tents are 40 feet wide. So you're going to have a 20 foot aisle in the center or maybe 15 if we've got a back that moves off a little bit to the angles. But you're still going to have more area in the center than they've ever had in any other show. The same thing with the dairy tent. The dairy tent is wider than the rest of them, but we have not taken the capacity for the tent. So we'll have, in there, the aisles are going to be, I want to say 13 feet, might be 50. Okay? So these are all things that we have taken into consideration so that we can make it so that everyone could sit. We have not been required to, at some states, where we had to have a 10 by 10 and then a blank space and so on. We don't have to do that. If it was inside, like the turning stone or something, you have to have 10 feet and five feet, and then five feet and 10 feet. Basically, you've got 10 feet between the booths.
I just have a similar question for Dave, which is, on the county's COVID website, there is a plan you have to set for COVID plan. If you're having a large event, does this constitute a large event that is required to submit a home?
I would, yeah, I would say so, yeah. And that's just so that, because the, you have the state regulations, but the counties are the actual enforcement mechanism for those state rules and regulations. So this, that, that application or form puts this, this activity on the map so that we know if we need to do a spot check or something like that, that, yeah.
And then one other question for you, which is economic impact. We keep hearing about the economic impact to the area. And I'm just curious if you could be more specific about what, what the economic impact would look like?
Yeah, well, you know, anytime you've got 15 to 25,000 people coming in. And, and, you know, the vast majority of these people are coming from outside the county. And some of them just maybe just for the day, but some of them for a few days. So, you know, that's going to drive hotel rooms. It's going to drive, you know, everything from, you know, stopping for, for gas or, or a snack at one of the local, local stores. or, or a snack at one of the local, local stores, either right, right here in town obviously, or, um, around the county. All that stuff adds up and, and, uh, sales tax and room nights or room occupancy and, and all that. And obviously our hotels have really gotten hammered, uh, this past year. So that was a, uh, you know, a nice little shot in the iron for us. Our economic development team has, uh, has, has put some numbers on this, but suffice it to say, it's, it's, uh, they're gonna spend several million dollar, um, economic impact overall. And, uh, gosh, it was, uh, several hundred room nights, uh, at local hotels.
Then I have two questions for Dan. Thanks for Dan, but it might be you. I'm not sure to figure it out. And then I'm done. Um, and for those of you who don't know, I am a question person, so sorry. The auction that is part of, it's not part of Empire Farm Days, but it will be occurring in the area overlapping. Is one question I have if we could get more information on that. And then also, um, with Farmland Preservation Trust, there is a requirement that you have the conservation plan, um, for how the land will be, that, that's being used will be, continue to be farmed. I, I don't know if that's exactly what it's for, but there was a requirement. So if you could just address those two things?
Yeah, but it's been done. Soil and water. We have a regular plan, soil and water. Um, so they took our plan and updated it for the farm show to include, you know, so one of their commitments, our farm is forever farming, so it's sold the development rights to the state. We can use it for agricultural purposes. Um, we had to go through quite a bit to make sure that this event fit in with that and the state, uh, uh, New York State Ag and Markets agreed with that and the land trust agreed with it. Um, the only part that's not being used for agricultural production is the four acres of roadways. Everything else with no permanent structures, still a hayfield. So, um, they've got a plan for that to make sure that if there's any impact to the hayfield, that that's dealt with at the conclusion of the event. We're taking two puddings of hay off a year. So, um, that's all set there. And then the, the previous question on the auction, um, Dan, Dan is my partner, is Del, you know, Carly Farms. I think Dan's back here somewhere. Um, he's, uh, so that's gonna be on the, the shop side of the road where we have all of our equipment is being moved down to his barn. Actually, a lot nicer during the rest of the year. Um, so yeah, for a couple of weeks there, there will be, uh, equipment coming in there for an auction, which has always been helped with the Empire Farm Days. Land Trust agreed to that. It's on that side of the road of our shop. Old Brooks have been gracious and awesome. I mean, they're significantly impacted by this and, uh, and, uh, so they, they've got that all set there and it will get, get you the same plant or explanation. I'll work with Dan on that. But it's basically, you know, people from the farm show that are interested in some of the equipment moving over there. And it's only one day. The second day is actually all online, so it's actually there. So.
So that's my, those are my questions that, and, um, I'm just wondering, who else on the board? Joe?
Hi, you ready? For Ken, uh, being that you're in charge of everything.
You guys speak up for, for traffic purposes. I take it you're handling that up in the hamlet all the way through.
Basically, the sweet road is perfect for it because it's got the third lane. We're gonna basically take cones and put it up that way. All of the, the other thing I wanted to stress is, in the past, they have had a three or four day movement. You've had this big surge of tractor trailers coming through your town and everything. We do what's known as an orchestrated movement. We will start general movement the nineteenth. You will not have fifty trucks in in one day. Everybody, we try to keep it to five or six of the bigger ones. I'm not saying people won't come with their cars or whatever, but you're not gonna have this vast amount of traffic coming in. The other thing we've done is we backed, you can't, uh, this depends, we're just parking over here. We backed all the way to the hill and then we're putting in, uh, we're widening that driveway to sixty feet. There'll be Jersey barriers up the center. And we'll be having people come in and we'll get them off of the road very rapid. The other thing you've got is, there's not this big surge of traffic that people think. You're gonna have the farmers that are gonna come this Sunday morning, okay? So from seven to nine, I'm probably gonna have, but after that, and the other thing is, these are career farmers. At two-thirty in the afternoon, ninety percent of the people are gonna be out. And some of them are gonna stay for the auction. A nice part about this, the auction starts when the trade show ends. So, or when Empire Farm Days ends, so they'll be moving out. You know what I mean? And they might have some people coming in to park and they're gonna park on the other side, but they're also gonna use the, uh, parking we have for Empire Farm Days. So I think we've got everything covered. Uh, I've got a traffic planning guy looking it over and, uh, I don't think there's gonna be an issue there. I mean, I need this to run smooth as well as you do. And the biggest reason people don't understand is, people can have a fantastic trade show, which is where my money comes from, which is people buying the booths. But if they can't get in or they can't get out, either move in, move out, or they have attendees, they're not coming back. And I need everybody to come back. So a lot of our efforts, we have more people that are gonna be on site parking cars than we've ever had before. We're also gonna have, as you mentioned, Bruce Button. He's a general manager of our company. He's in charge of ours. Because he wants to make sure, not every day, but the, the first day till things roll smooth. And the other thing is, we're kind of a hands-on operation. I've got ten of my own people that have done these trade shows for years and they'll, they all know what's going to happen. And getting people, it doesn't do me any good for somebody to sit on Sweet Road because they're not spending any money. They're not spending any money and these people are gonna win back.
I'll, I'll add that we're the, 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 you're gonna try to, all publications are telling people to go Route twenty, eighty-one to twenty, to avoid the Pratt's Falls Road and the ninety-one and all of that. But Sweet Road is double Y. So you can run cones up both sides. If it's done right, that's the goal. You can keep traffic moving in the middle and have your farm show parkers. There's obviously people that don't pay attention to that. These have to move them over, so.
Thank you.
I have the same question. So again, backup traffic. The entry lane was only one entrance, so give me answer.
The other thing is, we've got a second entrance. We just put in a second entrance.
Oh, that sounds better, yeah.
But I mean, we're not gonna use it till we back up. It's an entrance we had to put in for tractor trailers. All right? And it's going basically.
Overfill parking lot.
Well, they made it big enough. I mean, there's also planned that one. And with Bruce and the crew keeping track, they've done the radio. I've got people on deck that are gonna swing off their jobs and start that one up if we have to.
Let's, let's, let's say real quick on parking and roads on the Goodnew side. Um, you know, as part of the stimulus package that the county is receiving, uh, we're gonna pay a hundred and sixty miles of county roads, um, in the county. But, um, I've been able to arrange for a, a lot of county roads in Poppy are gonna get paved this summer. And, uh, we talked, talked to the DOT Commissioner and Poppy's gonna be the first town that gets paved. So everything will be done in May and June in Poppy. Um, and so that we're well ahead of this and there won't be any construction going on in the area when, uh, you know, when this hits, so.
We're gonna use that forty-five mile line and Steve's on site, right?
The DOT Commissioner took pictures. Those signs should be going up in the next day. So forty, it'll be forty-five, um, Sweet Road, uh, when the, the thirty mile an hour ends just, uh, just to the north, it'll go forty-five all the way, Pratt's Falls Road, um, and then it will turn back to fifty-five. And that's permanent.
Okay, so if my, we have to say, I forgot to introduce Nikki Reader, Tom Clark, and Bob Redd, he's our close officer. Um, he's here. She's done awesome job on minutes, but you do. Um, and, um, I may have come. So, um, but, so Veronica, I want to open the floor to public for questions. Just all remembered, like the old speech beginning, about basically let's be kind to each other. Um, we don't, we can make our points and, and ask questions. So, um, I don't know if we've got virtual and I don't know who here would like to ask the question, um, but, um, I mean, I could, I can, I can recognize people from here. Um, so, and maybe people just came to here and not asked. I don't know. But, um.
Anybody have any questions?
I know.
So just need a name.
I'm Dan Hessler. Myself, my sister, my niece and her husband chaired the entire western border of the show. Our properties are on the western border. And, uh, just have a few concerns. Again, not against the show, just wanna make sure it doesn't intrude on our properties. Um, first off, I see you got the fed set nice. Um, is there gonna be anybody securing those areas, like the parking lots and stuff, so that people just can't come walking onto our properties?
It's all fenced off. I mean, they'd have to really wanna walk on your property to get there.
From the parking lot, they can walk right into the field warehouse. So again, I'm not trying to be, I just.
It's gonna go right back to your wall, the fences. It's gonna be around the facility, but it's gonna go right back to them.
But in the parking lot.
Over there, obviously.
Parking lot, people are gonna be thousands of cars over there. You know, people who walk right through, we know on property. I just wanna make sure that there's somebody there to make sure that it's not people.
Well, we got car parkers there. We will make them aware they cannot go on that property. That's not an issue at all. I mean, I've got, like I said, twice as many people. They're gonna be down there parking cars. And the other side of the coin is ninety percent of these people who are coming here wanna get in the show. And they, they know that.
There's always those strings where it's, you know, like.
Yeah, I understand.
Something else. Um, yeah, I have a few questions. I don't wanna monopolize the meeting, but.
I'll let you know.
We have, we have a question about, are they bringing in water? Are you guys really mauls for this? Cause obviously our.
We're bringing in water. It's all gonna be brought in in tanks.
Um, are there gonna be lights on all night?
There's not gonna be any lights on all night at all. I have no provision for lights on at all at night. I am gonna have people patrolling. Don't get me wrong. And they're probably gonna have flashlights checking things out. But as far as overhead lights are concerned, in that field, there won't be any.
I'll have my normal lights that I have every other day. Dan, can I go back to your first question?
Yeah.
The goal, this fence right here and, and our, where our properties join and I start that side down. So they would have to go down into the woods and remain to get over to yours. That fence is gonna go all the way to the trees.
That's gonna go all the way down into the parking lot, dude?
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, it's gonna go all the way to the trees. So they would have to go into the woods and down through to get up to your side.
I, I, I just see it around the actual.
And the reason we're doing that is so that nobody could get between the fence for the show and that strip by your house. So we're gonna box it completely off.
Okay. Um, you had mentioned, uh, you have, you have a very short summary here. You had mentioned that the show was gonna start on the nineteenth of July.
No, we're gonna just be on site. We're gonna be on site on the tenth, but the show itself does not start. In other words, I'm gonna have a crew of ten people because everything's gotta be done so it comes out. I mean, all the electric is underground. I'm gonna be running the electrical lines across the thing. But as far as attendees you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about you're gonna be sitting on the show for basically a month.
Yes, we are.
Cause it's carrying down for how long?
Two days.
Okay.
Well, I shouldn't say that, but the tenth, at noon, I have to be out. When this show stops at three o'clock on Thursday, I have a crew of fifteen people. They're gonna start getting this stringed around. I would like to tell you that by the middle of, of Saturday, I'll be done. I'm not gonna tell you that because I know I will be done by no later than Tuesday at noon. And by that, I mean, the equipment is gonna be off. You won't see four trucks running or like that. It's gonna be my guys cleaning up the ground, collecting up the infrastructure and getting it out of there.
But it's gonna be from the nineteenth of July to getting everything set up.
Actually, no, it's gonna, we're, like I said, we're starting on the tenth.
The tenth of July.
But.
It's actually almost a month of set.
Right, but there's gonna, from the tenth of July until about the twentieth, you're gonna have ten people of my crew. You're not gonna have anybody else there. And then the general movement, and the other thing about it is I have to do the movement around these people. If I don't get anybody coming in on the nineteenth, the following week I'll have a heavier hit. You understand what I'm saying? But it's all an orchestrated type of deal by their schedules. Because the other thing I'm fighting is a lot of this equipment's gonna come from Canada. We have to open the border up to Canada. They can get the equipment, but they're given a certain span to get it. And I have to work with those.
We have one month of show. That's all that.
One month, yes.
Yeah, I live fifty yards from where you're putting the show in, so we're gonna build the roads. We hear you, put it every morning. You guys are building roads. You hear the stuff all day. So for a month, we're gonna be hearing the stuff running all day. It is what it is. I mean, it is what it is, but I'm just saying it's gonna be a month. This is me doing what's planned. I think that's it. And basically, there's no other plan stand for, I mean, you're building plenty of structure back there for multiple shows during the summer.
It's, well, it's lease infrastructure for one. Um, for two, land trust only agreed to this and Ag markets only agreed to it because it's Empire Farm Days. It's an agricultural trade show. So, uh, I has absolutely no plans for anything else other than my wagon going around the driveways or something. I mean, it's still my land and those driveways are on my property, so. Um, and I do my normal car shows up here and I got my fields. My goal is, with this show, is to have Empire Farm Days back, not to, you know, have whatever. I'll tell them what else you can do that bigfoot.
And again, when we talked earlier, our biggest concern was, again, we're totally supportive of the farm base, was that this doesn't turn into, you know, many state fairgrounds that were having festivals all summer, fifty yards from our house.
No.
You know, we live here soon. We take that. This is, you know, we just wanna make sure that our privacy is protected also.
Yeah, and that electric, so.
And it's happening to us. It's everyone that borders the field.
We put underground boxes in so we can farm over the top of it, but those boxes, they have to come in and hook up their wiring system to it to run it. There's not even, when, when they're gone, there's not even electric there. There's stone driveways. That's all that's there.
Yeah, just, yeah. Hope everyone here can understand our concerns. We live right there and we have multiple festivals in the field next to our house. And we've put quite a bit of money in there that, you know, that it's not what we, that's not what we, you know, expecting when we moved up there.
Yeah, I rented this, you know, to them and, and they had the ability to put forever anywhere. And we've been talking about the concerns and stuff like that. That's when Ken came up with this fencing plan and you also noticed field demos are gone. We're not doing field demos down in that corner anymore. We hear you. If we're not, we gotta be able to put this show on, put it on safely over here. We're trying not to be up in your face about it or anything like that. We're trying to work with, with everybody.
The other requirement is part of the, the land trust, uh, signing off on this that controls the, the use of the property outside of farming is that, um, there have to be crops taken out of this field at, like, like normal. So that restricts other activities being there if they can't, that would trample down the crops or anything like that. So that's another protection that you have.
It's only our personal, we had a discussion with yourself and the other gentleman about stuff that we can do on your side and our side. You know, putting up shrubs or whatever, just to kind of give us our privacy. But that's, um, okay, we had, we had talked about that. You had originally talked about berm, which I was at first opposed to, but after seeing what it is, if you guys wanted to put a berm up, we'd be happy with that.
Well, that train, we used that, that dirt, that, that was the dirt that was, you're taking off the first six inches for the, to put the stone down. Um, it would be more something like, which, Dan, I had no trouble with that. I mean, cause honestly, I mean, don't take this the wrong way, but if I'm looking out the back of my house, I don't necessarily wanna see your house, so we can, we can look at opportunities for, you know, for stuff like that. Absolutely, we'd be fine.
Can I ask a question from what you've asked? What, when you talk about setup, you know, we say month of setup. What is setup? I, I mean, I.
All right, I'll go through what setup is. On the tenth of, on the tenth of July, with a group of ten seats, they're coming. It takes three days to mark the booths. Three days to mark, do nothing but mark up booths. And the equipment involved is a golf cart, a wagon and a hammer and a bunch of bags. We also have to fence all this. So we are gonna have a post driver there. Mom and us kids here. And there's a hundred and sixty-three fence posts have to go up. So they have to be put up. The fence itself will not be put up until the first weekend before the show because there's not gonna be anybody interested in any other part of it. And then that's, uh, the Saturday, Sunday, Monday and Tuesday, because I have to use my crews when they're not in production. We are a full, uh, publishing company. My crew, that's, I borrow the crews from the publishing company to help me check the jack, because they're low. Now, the following week will be people coming in, the four trucks, that, that, some of them will come in for, oh, the nineteenth of tents coming. The ten people come in, the tents will not be put up before the nineteenth. That takes about four days. And then, we'll be working, putting electricity into the tents. So it's a constant, as far as what we're doing exactly, you say, it takes a long time to set this show up, it would take. And we're gonna do it with a GPS, but still, each one of these little lines here has had a stick that says, this is this booth, this is that booth. So we're gonna, if we do two, two rows a day, we're gonna be doing real well, but I gotta push them hard. But we are not starting our work until late thirty in the morning, and we'll be done at five o'clock at night. Well, my guys are not noisy, they know what they have to do. In other words, you're not gonna hear loud music from my boys, trust me. They're there to do one thing and one thing alone, they get a bonus for helping me with this show. If they screw up, we take the bus. We have a very, we want to make this experience for everyone as nice as we can. I'm not coming into town like a carny, and I'm gonna be here once, and you're never gonna see me again. I've got a contract for this facility, or for this, whatever you wanna call it, it's not a facility, there's no buildings. And it's very important to me that everyone has a harmonious, oh, not, the exhibitors and everyone else. We are not letting any exhibitors camp on the grounds. They've always been able to camp on the grounds in Santa Pauls. They're gonna camp up where he is camping, but there's been, at four o'clock in the afternoon, they have until five to get out. And then I run around in little golf carts, throw everybody out. And then, so there's not gonna be, but, trust me, two thirty in the afternoon, the majority of these people are going to be gone. The only reason we run it till four o'clock is because people want, they've got somebody there that they're writing a big deal for, they want to be able to stay and not be pulled out.
Anybody else have questions? Just piggyback off of Dan's question, but section one.
There's one more question, I'm a little bit so strange, but we noticed it the other day, Dan, is that, uh, during the show, are we gonna be running drones all the time? Because I noticed some drones coming down near our house, and that's a little bit intrusive when drones get over our property. They haven't come over, they've been in the field, and I go up to just, like, do videos of what you're doing. Or for commercials or something, but when you do it, I mean, you just not have a drone come over.
Oh, I can't, can't answer the showpiece, the, the normal rest of the year, absolutely, so. Tim was having some droning done to show the examples of the roadways and stuff like that, but anybody else? You know, I have customers outside, I don't want drones, some renegade drone hitting somebody in the head, so they have to check in with me, and I'll make it clear, because I saw Joanne's letter, that nobody, no views of the houses down there and stuff like that, keep them up five minutes.
In our drone, we do have a couple of companies that are gonna demonstrate drones, but they have to have a minimum, have, have to have enough space. And it's all, as you look up here, these demo areas are not field demos, okay? They're gonna be guys letting people drive skid steers and so on, and if a person wants to do a drone, it has to be up there, and not be anywhere else, okay? We do have some drones that are going to, that will lift two hundred pounds, will be demonstrating over there, but I mean, as far as going around and going by your houses, I guarantee you that, if they do, I'll shoot them down.
Don't doubt that.
Is that a wire, is it a wire? It's on the, on.
Yeah, that's a pilot casters, yeah.
And it's not a constant, I also want to tell you, there's not gonna be somebody in there constantly demonstrating. What happens is, they get a time, and if they want to go outside that time, they have to call me, say, I've got a client that wants to see this run, and then I have to make sure that it goes over to somebody else. So we do keep a control over the area. The only other thing is the Skids and Rodeo, which is way behind the brewery, and that runs on Wednesday from nine until one. But it's basically, they're gonna run the machines, and then we put up the time, and they get five hundred bucks for it. It just gives them more chance to demonstrate the equipment, and then, you know, because I have to give these guys the opportunity, other than in their booth and their.
I have one question from virtual, if you want to do that one. Okay, okay, do that one first.
Your name, sir?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question about the contracting of the event, assuming this is a one-year event, multiple years?
Your contract?
Oh, eight-year contract.
Yeah. The question was, if this was a multi.
Is it a multi-year contract, yeah, it's eight-year contract.
Yep, um, the question is, can you go over the COVID protocols again?
Everyone that comes to the trade show, asks for the registration, has to register each day, it'll be a different amount. The other thing is, we have the, we've done a protocol with the porta potties, they have to be washed more than normal, and they have washing stations, sterilization station. The other thing is, they do not have to wear a mask when they're outside, but they do have to wear a mask if they go into tents. The tents have also been made, the tents should only be thirty feet wide, they're forty feet, make a twenty-foot aisle in the center, so that there's more room for people to be distancing or whatever. There's, I will have people in the tent telling people to wear a mask. Other places, I'm not the mask police, and according to what I've read, if you're outside, you don't have to have one on. And that's based, oh, and as far as exhibitors are concerned, again, when I go to work every day, I have to fill out a sheet saying that I have had COVID and whatever, you know, I haven't come in contact with somebody. All exhibitors, every morning, have to do that, they bring them into the office, a girl lets me file them, so that we know that. Plus, that's a way to know what exhibitors are there, because the exhibitors register with the bags, they don't have to register every day. So I have to know what exhibitors are there, because you're gonna have roughly a thousand to fifteen hundred exhibitors that are gonna be there, they switch in and out, someone with their one-man band are there every day, but that's what we're doing with COVID.
Do you have an online registration? I just want to go through that, whatever, I want to just register online.
The problem I've got with it, they wanted to do that online registration, the problem I've got is, if you didn't go, I had the registration, I'd be down as being, that's my only issue. According to the rules, I'm supposed to have the people that are there. Now, I'm gonna, I can go back and check, because I don't do the registration, okay? And it's gonna be, the other thing is, if you get comfy folks, or if you go to one of the equipment dealers, as it gets closer, there will be a ticket there, and that is your registration. You fill the ticket out, you walk straight through, you know, you can fill the ticket out at any time, and it'll be online, you can print the ticket out and bring it in with you. And that'll be, you know, like, that's all the information that we need to gather.
We have two skiers, because that I work with, and we did, um, registration for all the seasons in castle. So when they pay to ski, they just get equipped, registration, basically, our website.
We're hoping that we have Wi-Fi there. That's another thing, because I have to have a booster for my, in my barn, you know, try to boost it down there, so I don't know reliable here or there.
Quite honestly, they're working on it, I heard. I know. Quite honestly, the COVID rules could be completely different by the time August.
But we went told by, because we do have a legal staff for the COVID. I had to get them to do press the main, so that I could make sure it wouldn't be shut down. They're very good at what they do, and they have told me that it's not going to go back. There's a ninety-nine percent chance it's not gonna go back, and then it was more of a backwards, that it's gonna be a little, but they're still gonna make me register. And even if they don't make me register everybody, I am willing to do that.
Parking lot capacity is number, guys, and then the overflow.
I've got the figures at my desk, to be honest, I could get them to you, but I, I don't, I, I know that, uh, someone told me they had to handle thirty-five hundred cars, four thousand cars, just in the one end block, not counting this part up here and across the street. But the other thing about it is, people are frugal, I won't say the word cheap, but they're frugal. And they do not want to give me the five dollars if they can put five people in a car. And that's what they've done for years. And then, also, Empire Farm Days was in Santa Pauls, it was ten dollars. And it is ten dollars, if you don't go to one of the dealers, it's in the show, you get a coupon, or if you get comfy folks, it's in there.
We have more area than we did, like I said before, in the seventies and eighties, and I had looked at, and this, this is right here, is a tax, this is one tax parcel, it's forty acres. So, yeah, I did the math with ten, and then when you add across the street, you shoot, I mean, honestly, it would be a great problem to have, I just couldn't believe that we would need to double.
Because I can also open up, or, my contingency plan is to open up where the, uh, Skids and Rodeo is, I moved the Skids and Rodeo, well, that's, and I don't care. If I need an area for cars, that's where cars will go. But I have to keep traffic flowing to make everybody happy, and not just the people on the roads, which I want to keep you guys happy too, but if I have people that cannot get into a trade show. That's why there's gonna be five times as many people registering people than we've ever had, because I've got to get the people in the door. We have a corporate sponsor called Kaboga, whose sponsor's giving away a twenty-five thousand dollar machine. The way you can get it is filling out the registration. So I have to make sure everybody is moving. We've done the registration in all our indoor shows. Um, some of the indoor shows, uh, farm shows don't do it, we have done it. It's a ticket, and they have to fill it out, and I, Keystone Farm Show is, is a show that I do, I have eleven, uh, ten buildings and three large tents, and tents are, uh, three hundred and fifty feet long and eighty-five feet wide. And everyone is registered, because when they register, we put a wristband down for the indoor shows. And if they say, oh, I filled that out, the other one, where's your wristband? We don't have any thought out here, because of multiple buildings. This is the reason for the tent. The tent is gonna be thirty feet wide, she's got twenty, yeah, it's thirty feet wide and forty feet long. It's gonna be all kinds of places for people to fill out the registration, because that to us is important.
Anything else, virtual?
No, not at the moment.
Well, if we're, if everybody's good, I'm here, because, first of all, thank you for bringing us, it really says a lot about this town, that people turn out, and, and so I appreciate that.
Oh. If we're not over, I'd like to make a comment, a couple of comments.
You guys speak.
I say, I'd like to make a few comments. Um, I've known Dan for a long time.
This is Chris Larkin.
Yeah, Chris Larkin.
Not that anybody probably doesn't know you, but.
I'm sure he's gonna do a great job, but I think, I'd like to thank him for doing this for the community. I think his property residents, we should be proud of them. He, uh, he doesn't have to do this, he's, uh, he's, I think he's doing a great thing for the community. And I know the last thing he wants to do is upset his neighbors, and, uh, I think you guys, in the end, will be happy. Um, my other comment is for, I, I work a lot of trade shows, I've worked good ones, bad ones, and, uh, today, usually you register online, you never hear from the organization again. And then you get to the show, and you scramble to get everything ready, and you scramble to carry everything down when it's done, and then you get the bill. Ken's organization, I'm an exhibitor at this show. Uh, Ken's organization has already contacted me four times in person, asked me about my space. You know, helped me make sure that everything's okay, what he wanted it. That was three times, and four times to make sure I sent the chat. From what I've seen so far, these guys are gonna do a great job. I know it's weird if they don't, and I'll be back here, tell them what they did wrong.
No, if I don't do well, you'll be talking to someone else.
So I, I just, I think it's gonna be a great show.
Thank you, Chris. Um, Brian, just one more.
Yep, from Joanne Huffler, um, what safety measures are in place in case of a fire?
We have a, uh, fire department is going to be on site, he's gonna be roaming around, is also part of the EMTs and so on. And we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have a tanker there, right?
Fire truck.
Fire truck, ambulance, and so on.
And at least EMT will be on site, right, Mike?
No, two minutes.
Two minutes on site.
I think that's required.
You'd be surprised.
No, you'd be surprised.
Not fire truck, but.
I actually have a question to add onto that. What about other security, like, um, police or other types of security?
So I, I personally, yeah, I'm a person to have my own security for my area in this camping. Ken's, yeah.
I have a couple of guys, they're not cops, but trust me, they'll be there every night, from time to closes, until I come there in the morning, they're.
Well, we wouldn't want to mess with you.
They're gonna be in a camper, up in the camp area, but that's just for them, uh, those two guys, they've gotta do nothing for fourteen hours to drive that, and they know what happens if somebody, if somebody's missing something, it'll be more of an issue for them than, than, than the normal, because I don't want somebody to come to a trade show and have somebody come in there and steal all of their coats, hats, or whatever. I mean, some people are foolish, and then they leave their laptops sitting out there, and I mean, how do you know whether somebody leaving the show with it, you know? That, I can't, can't fight that part of it, and it's happened. Guys have left the show early, forgot to put their laptop, all, all they do is put it under the table, the laptop and the kit, and me wondering what I was gonna do about it.
Lions is also gonna have, uh, security across the street, they have three levels, the whole place will be covered. It's the last thing I want either, and I want to be able to go to bed at night, to wake up and do it all over the next day too, so.
And the beer tents open at what time?
Um, it'll be open during the show, obviously, you know, I don't know if I'm gonna start at eleven or ten or whatever, but, you know, it'll be open then, but it'll be closed along with the show, so. Um, obviously, the brewery's gonna be open, I'll be open the full time, so.
Anyone else?
Can I throw something on a totally different subject? Real quick, a quick announcement.
This is only supposed to be about climate change.
Public service, public service. Um, just real quick, once it's a great, a great crowd, um, uh, some you may have seen, uh, we're, we're putting, uh, the county's spending fifteen million dollars into broadband coverage in, uh, areas that are dead zones, and so, starting April thirtieth, we're going to, uh, be doing a big, uh, campaign to get the word out to have people, um, tell us if, if you don't have service, or if your service isn't great, or, you know, whatever your situation is, so we know where we need to go. Um, so, uh, April thirtieth, uh, keep a watch, it'll be on the, we'll, we'll get the information to the, to the town, so they'll have it on their website. There'll just be a link, go on, just fill out a very, very, very quick form, so we know where the bad spots are. I know there are spots in, uh, in Papi, um, somewhere you wouldn't think, uh, there, there are dead spots, but they are, you know, obviously are. Um, not that far from here, so, uh, just want to get the word out, April thirtieth, it'll be up, uh, folks could go on. Or if you know your neighbors, go on, and, you know, talk about your neighbor.
What about right here?
Yeah. No, it, yeah, obviously, it's a big issue, the COVID situation's always really shown, finally, we, I, you know, I've been talking about this for a long, long time, a lot of us have, and so, finally, tie up to the attention that needs to be, with kids trying to get to work in school, people trying to work from home, and so, yeah, I think we plan to get something done. So if it's.
Yep, um, Joanne Huffler has asked if she can be heard, some. Joanne, can you hear us? Can you speak? You have to unmute. Go ahead. Go ahead. Can't hear you, Joanne, so, um, yeah, can you type your comments in? All right, I think Joanne is all set. Well, she's, she says, I do not see where I can speak, must have hit the wrong button.
Oh, so she doesn't want to be heard, or, okay, I don't wanna.
I guess I would just say, yeah, she says she's fine. She doesn't need to.
All right. So I wanna thank these three, because they did not have to do this at all. But I've been bugging them to do something because, um, I felt like it was important for the community to have, have an opportunity to get information. And so that we can, because this town gossip, as we all know. So I want everybody to know the, the, like, what's, so I think expectations can be, um, if you don't understand, if you don't have the information, um, then people don't know what to expect. This way, you've got a really good idea at this point of what we can expect. You can debrief after everything has happened, but, um, I do wanna thank you all. Um, I think Ken came for this, um, but Dan also had to miss, um, an important meeting, um, to do this, business meeting. So I, and I, Dave, I don't know about you, but.
Bring me a file.
So I just wanna thank you, because it really was very informative for us, I think, I will say that. And, um, and I hope for you, and thank you all, all for coming. Um, I don't know if you are willing to hang around. I know he wants to go for his, his meeting, so. Um, but they're available, and if anybody has, um, follow-ups, we can get you in touch with them or talk to the next group. But I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I think you're welcome.
We.